What is your...
I have Chris for the second. Members Zaro?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubraski?
Aye.
Chair Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Before we begin, does anyone have a conflict of interest where they would need to recuse themselves?
No conflict.
No.
Okay. That should be unanimous. All right, good. We have in front of us three agenda items, minutes to review, and finally just a comment on the cell tower in the village. To keep everybody informed. So with that, we'll start with Jefferson Circle, the fencing there. You were back.
I'm back.
Thank you. Okay. Just to review, you have the option to come back and review the situation again, which is duly noted in the minutes.
We got the full board this time.
Yeah, we have the full board, which is, should be a full difference, complete difference here. So with that said, are there any comments? Fence is still the same?
Yeah.
Location, specifications, materials, et cetera.
I think we have two members who weren't here.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest that the applicant represent the application for those board members who are not here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just a black chain link fence in my backyard, just to keep my dog in the yard. It's a perimeter of the yard and it cannot be seen at all from the front yards. I reviewed the guidelines and it says in there specifically that black or green chain link is allowed in the backyard. And then I took exception to it and voted against it, finding that, one, the fact that it's chain length, I know that it says that it is compatible in certain situations. When looking at where it's going to be, if it was tighter to the rear of your house or within its limits and then going straight back, I thought that might be a better solution. But last week's meeting, or excuse me, last month's meeting, I found it not to be compatible or appropriate in that situation. It still would be visible from the street with it protruding out from your house and went back. I also took into consideration just the overall appropriateness of chain link fences. And fortunately for you, we only have three people at that board, so my vote ended up pushing it out of the entire month. So that's where we stand.
Yes. Blue sheet with that, with this application?
There isn't enough of the blue sheet.
Okay.
I didn't reattach it, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Steve, do you want to comment? You said you would look at this personally.
Yeah, I mean, you're, if you were to look at the front of the house, the left side you'll never see it, because all the bushes there. The right side you'll see, you might see a four or five foot piece of it behind the other shrub that it's there. It's so barely visible, visible that I, I kind of abandoned course with myself on whether it should even be reviewed because it's so minimally visible. So that's where I stood. I don't believe you'll, I mean, once it's black in that right side, what it's gonna show, you'll never even notice it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean historically, like a black vinyl chain link, it's the easiest way to just have it melt into the background. But at least I guess on the side of the house that is visible, have you considered, I don't know, like, I can't tell from the dimensions here, but, you know, a run of wood fence that is visible from the road and then just doing the three quarters or, yeah.
Everyone I've talked to, the black chain link is the easiest to look at. You can see where it goes, there's no one obstructing the view at all. It's totally the neighbors on the offside. They don't have any trouble with it at all.
Okay.
What's the age of your house?
It was built in 1955.
The biggest thing in the guidelines is a wall.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And I think for a mid-century house, kind of appropriate too.
I was going to make the comment that I, while I understand your objection, the guidelines permit it, and if we are going to be a board that makes defensible decisions, part of that is, is adhering to the guidelines.
That are stated.
That are, that are part of our ordinance, and the design guidelines of the village are attached to our ordinance. So despite the fact that we might prefer to see something else in general and not have chain link in the village at all, at this point in time, it is permitted and we are required to take action based on the ordinance in place in its entirety and not to take action on something that, that we hope would change in the future.
I think the objection, as I understand it, is because it actually sticks out from the house and then goes back, so you can't see it from the front.
Yet it's visible.
Right.
The design guidelines specify that it's not appropriate for front yards or other visible locations.
It's a little bit squirrely.
Where are you gonna have the fronts?
The kids are on one side.
Chris, I wouldn't call this front, like, front of the house.
It's attached to.
Yeah, it's running.
You really have to look pretty hard to see, cut from the front yard or the road. I don't think anyone's gonna see it. I'm just being perfectly honest with you.
I'm just new, this is my first time, and I read this, and I read the guidelines, and I was like, I don't see the issue, it's following the guidelines. That was my initial reaction to it, so.
It's, it's in, in place at the rear of the house. The front yard is in front of the house. So I...
You're not gonna see it on the left side. There's too much shrubbery and bush there. On the right side, you'll be lucky to see a very minimal piece of it because he's also got plantings over there.
Are we talking about, well, plantings? Ten feet, like, what do we?
I think probably six, five, six feet, if you're lucky. And it's gonna be black, and you're, I mean, you drive by, you'll never notice it, especially because he's back on each Jefferson Circle, he's not even on the main road.
Yeah.
Chris, do you want to see the blue sheet?
If you don't mind, yeah. Well, that helps so much more.
The blue sheet is still on the street.
Yeah.
They're not blue anymore, but they're still called blue sheets.
We wasted a lot of time around that.
I'm, I'm sure they did.
Okay, that does help, thank you.
Great. Any other comments on this application? Okay, I'd like to move that we approve this application as submitted.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Member Olson?
No.
Member Zaro?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubraski?
Yes.
Member Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
It's okay.
Good luck with those two all.
Yeah, thank you.
One, just one. Get your license, thank you. Welcome to the board, President.
Thank you very much. Twenty-five Courtney Circle.
Those are, those are examples of.
Yeah, yeah. I thought that was the case, but it's all.
No.
This is from the...
Yeah, yeah.
Updated information?
Blue sheet. The blue sheet's been making some patches.
Oh.
Okay.
Didn't count until tonight, everyone.
Oh, this is a... I should have bought my, my little red book. This is an architect-designed house, are you aware of that? In the era that this subdivision was built, some of the homes were just contractor-built or developer-built, and some of them were actually architect-designed. And, oh, I think I maybe left a copy here. Excuse me. Let me see if I can find a reference book that will tell you about the architect who designed your house.
That would be fun.
Explaining the windows.
Yeah, in the meantime, there's quite a, and there's also a, you've had an evaluation done.
Yes.
Yes, some help.
Thank you. Thank you. So did you come to the village and find out, like, the best way to go about that? How did you go to get here today from this?
There is a lot of chatter in the, to repeat your question?
I just want to know, because I'm really glad you guys went this route. I just want to know how you guys started and went along.
Steve.
Steve's, Steve's been remarkable.
Because this makes everything so much easier for us.
Oh, really?
Steve has been remarkable. So we got the contractor, the contractors who live with the village, the contractor owner who used to live in the village, so they're, they understood the process. The chatter in the villages, we all understand there's a process.
Yes.
With all the... And, and we all understand there's a process, and so the contractor, our contractor, Cameron Rooking, Ryan, who, he actually started the application to you all, and then Steve followed up with getting in touch with us to tell us, you know, what, how to, what to do next. And my question was, well, we don't know, what do we do next? And Steve was just remarkable.
Thank you, Steve.
He helpful and connected us with Blake, who Blake contacted us, and then we were able to get him scheduled in. Then we, then we had a big trip, and we were gone for six weeks. So Blake got to our house before we went on our trip.
Nice.
Did this wonderful report.
Yeah.
And Steve gave us the information and the questions. So it's my understanding, one of the first questions that Blake's report helps is, should you even change the windows? And the windows, from our understanding, the house was built in sixty-one, and the windows are, seem to be original. And they're cold, they don't have, you know, I hold them quite nicely, I wish my nice little piece of wood, front and back. I've gotten my arms caught in those quite a few times, you know, through the years. They're cold, they're drafty.
Yeah.
So as we work on our budget about home maintenance, you know, this year was windows, so we started this process. So we've got the estimate, we got the report from Blake with Steve's input and help. We've got us on the agenda here. And then Steve asked for a photo of the house, a better photo of the house, which I think you should have.
Yeah, we have almost.
And then the cut sheets for the materials, which were the vinyl windows. It's, the request is to replace all the windows in the house, which includes two sets in the garage, so they all, so front and back. So it's a very, very large project.
Yeah.
And that's for sure.
So one of the, the first question here is, is anything that goes in there, will it, it'll be the exact same size opening?
Yes. Yes.
Are we resizing any?
No, correct, yeah. No, this is, yes. Just replace, yeah. No remodeling of any sort.
Right, right.
On the application, now you said your contractor filled out for the application. He is saying you're replacing wood windows with vinyl. And, and I'm bringing up Blake's report, which says all the windows are aluminum.
They are, yeah.
Now, it's, it's very unusual, fairly unusual, for metal windows, whether they're steel or aluminum, to have been installed in a wood-framed house. Typically, historically, metal windows were used in masonry construction, not wood construction. I'm quite familiar with the issues of aluminum windows. I'm a retired preservation architect, and one of the projects I was involved in during my career was looking at aluminum windows in a chapel for Nazareth Academy, Lake Avenue. Same issue. Aluminum transfers heat, whether hot, hot heat or cold heat, easier than almost any other material you could have for a window. And at this chapel, the windows were sweating so much around the aluminum. And these are, these were, this is an older building.
Yeah.
And in that case, it was destroying the plaster around the window, and the plaster contained asbestos. So that was really a very bad situation there. But Blake comments about deterioration of wood around the metal frame and all that sort of thing. It's my opinion that it was, despite the fact that this was an architect-designed house, metal windows, aluminum windows should never have been put in a wood-framed construction building. And it surprises me that they've lasted this long. So I'll, I'll put out right up front. And I'm usually the last person who would ever agree to a window replacement in a, in an historic district. But I think these windows are the unusual case, that it was an inappropriate installation originally, and I have no problem with you changing the windows, but not to vinyl. So I'm okay with you losing the windows, just not installing vinyl. You'll have similar problems with vinyl because vinyl has such a, it expand, expands and contracts so much. So that's my only comment.
What window material would be appropriate for the age of this house?
Wood.
Wood, just wood.
Yeah, they weren't, they weren't making, they were making metal windows, and metals were typically aluminum or steel.
For basement windows, for instance, metal frame.
Well, yes, because basements, they're masonry.
Yeah.
So masonry buildings all over the place.
The only, the only thing is you've got to, you've got to remember the neighborhood and precedent.
Burned down house has...
The neighborhood and precedent. You approved homes in that neighborhood with vinyl windows.
I agree, but this is the very first application that I've heard of a residence, a wood-framed structure with metal windows in. And there's, there is a bottom line, underlying, serious issue with metal windows that a metal window now might be hollow with insulation inside. If you, if there was something like that, and the other board members felt that retaining the metal was, was important.
What I'm saying, Jenny, is that the windows they are proposing have been approved by the board in that neighborhood. The same style of windows, same type of vinyl windows have been approved in houses in Courtney Circle by this board.
The same type of house at thirty-one, where the burned down house?
There are several homes in that neighborhood who provide vinyl windows by the historic preservation board of this village.
I can always argue for wood.
Yes, well, you know, what you're replacing is still replacement. What you're putting in is what matters, whether you're pulling out of metal wood or...
No, the remove, the removal of an original character-defining feature is the issue. Of course, what goes back in is important too. But if you, if you don't allow the replacement, then there's no issue with what, what goes in instead.
What was the context that was the justification for going outside the design guidelines in those instances?
Because it's post-war, you know. I don't believe in outside the design guidelines. I think these things are specifically discussed in the design.
Yeah. Okay, ninety-seven of the design guidelines.
It's a vinyl being appropriate.
Now, we've done it a few times. And Steve said that sort of...
Although I think, I think this board has been working hard to step that back, and we always, we're always looking at each case individually.
However you are about the precedent, we can't just suddenly change horses in midstream there again. But as far as the circumstances, we're hard pressed not to allow them.
Were the approved houses in the neighborhood before or after the guidelines?
After.
After.
Our...
What page number did you say?
Ninety.
Seven, ninety?
No, they looked that up. Just every window will be replaced with the same mountain style as well, eight over eight, with six over sixes here. You're gonna, you're not gonna change any of those? The window styles, they'll stay at the same exact grid pattern?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then you look upstairs, look to be in some, maybe in a bedroom, those smaller ones.
Windows folding, one by one.
And they're not specifically listed for...
The issue with the vinyl is that it's a wider...
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought. These are just the general rehabilitation standards when we address windows. Vinyl windows are made solely of vinyl, which is extruded from a mold inside. The inside is hollow, yada, yada.
What comes down to it, the extruded vinyl clad wood, is that any better for heat transfer?
Could that be a composite?
No, it's wood with a vinyl coating on it.
Composite, yeah.
On the outside.
Is, is the question again?
Actually, to you, is the heat, is the heat transfer better with plant?
There's less, there's less transfer.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's not metal.
No, no, we're talking about vinyl, not metal.
I'm sorry, vinyl, vinyl.
The newer vinyl is pretty well insulated. It's comfortable to it, as I understand.
Yeah, I think thirty-one was an old, and I mean, if you're in that neighborhood, there's...
Well, it's different though.
Yeah. There's, I can go back over the years, but I have, I've been involved in numerous in that neighborhood where it runs to vinyl. And just out of curiosity, if you're going to a vinyl clad, what's the difference? You know, I mean, it, it's still vinyl on the exterior. Remember, it's clad interior. That has nothing to do with the view shed of historical...
No, it doesn't. I'm just thinking, is it, is it any better in terms of heat transfer?
I didn't write the design guidelines, but it explicitly states that clad is more appropriate if the substitution for wood is indistinguishable. So, and specifically not an entire frame, but the cladding itself, and it does point out that the decision for appropriateness should be made on a case-by-case basis.
Well, to answer, to answer your question.
Specifically for post-war.
Vinyl is a material that expands and contracts a lot. Wood does not expand and contract a lot with heat. Moisture, yes, but not with heat.
Yeah, yeah.
And a clad window is wood with vinyl wrap.
Yeah.
So that as far as stability and perhaps durability and length of useful service life of a window, a vinyl window will probably not last as long, I don't, I'm just speculating, will not last as long as a clad window, simply because the vinyl will, will deform. Now, I am familiar with some older clad windows. Some parts of the window, like the sill on the outside, and this is one that I, a specific instance of a, of a vinyl clad wood window, the sill, the end grain of the wood on the outside portion was exposed because there was not cladding. The cladding did not cover the, the end piece and its end grain. So the sill of the window was rotted back because moisture was getting in at the end, because it was, it was not protected. And I don't know what your windows would look like.
I have a question. You've mentioned wood. What's the difference between a wood window and a composite?
Well, wood is, wood is composite, is fiberglass and sawdust and glue.
Compressed.
So it's sort of wood?
No, it's, it's, it's a mixture of sawdust and a binder.
Oh, oh, like making, not natural, making it from, oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, artificial wood or something.
Well, it's, it's like trucks or some of those other things.
Decking material. So I'm thinking, you know, in, in looking at this, you've submitted vinyl, and there are other, you know, options to look at, and you really have some severe, you know, transfer problems there. You want to really have that squared away. You can go ahead and we can look at this application as it is, or you may want to consider other materials, it's really up to you.
Did you guys look at wood at all?
No, because we looked at composite, and the cost of the, the job is ten thousand dollars more.
Yeah.
I just want to put this out there, just considering the unique nature of this one. Because it was built with, like, original, we assume, aluminum, and I don't know if it's what you're interested in or not, but I could see this is a situation that seems like an aluminum clad would feel appropriate, given the fact that it was originally aluminum.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
In spirit of it.
Well, one question, do you know that they were originally aluminum?
Well, so from, from the information that's provided to us, it does indicate that it doesn't seem that there is any working of the frames or anything of that nature, and so it was of their architect's perspective that it appears that they are original.
Yeah, I would assume they're original.
Despite being very unusual, or, or to his point, I believe he said that it very well could have been a very early substitution, but that would have been, seems arbitrary, because why would they, like, five years in, like, now, let's get rid of these?
Well, there, there are records for this board that go back to nineteen seventy-eight, which could be searched to see if an approval was given, because even back in those days, there would be...
Yeah, well, I mean, what, this is built fifty-five?
Sixty, sixty-one.
Sixty-one.
Yeah, so could have been, could have been that early.
So you, you, we can vote on what you proposed, or if you feel like you would like to look at different options. I know you said when composite was more expensive, so, you know, these are things that get weighed into the equation. So that's...
For them, not for us.
Yeah, right.
We don't care how much it costs. You need, you need to understand that. Our decision...
Cannot be financial, yeah.
Should, should be based on appropriateness, not on cost.
Yeah.
The cost of things should not, doesn't matter as far as appropriateness, appropriateness goes.
So we can...
So, so I have a question, and it's procedural.
Yeah.
So if we want to go with vinyl suggestion, materials, can you vote on that tonight? And, and let's say you, you might pass that vote based on previous histories, then, then that would be the end of it. But if you say no, what happens then?
You could come back again with a, with a different hour, with a different material.
New application.
How long would that take?
A month.
Yeah, it'd be a month, yeah.
You're here in December.
We need everybody, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. So, so if you vote no, and then we have another chance of coming back next month with another proposal.
Yeah.
That would require a new application?
Yeah, I, I was gonna ask that question, does that involve...
It would be a new application, I would think.
Could save you seventy-five bucks by waiting.
We would, we would talk to the board trustees about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think a full vote, if the application would then be closed, and you would have to do a new one later. We talked to board trustees about this.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so then answer the question. Well, we'd like to continue to go with a proposal that our contractor made for the vinyl windows. So, if you'd like to vote on that, point of view, right? Then, then that's, that's what we want to do.
Do we have a motion to?
Yeah, I'll present a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve this application as presented. We have a document from Mr. Blake Hell stating in this instance that presents the most clear case for replacements or repair of any home that I've reviewed for the windows at, let's see, twenty-five Quirky Circle. I'll make a motion to approve it as presented tonight.
I'm starting my motion.
Number Sarah?
Was there a second?
Yes, right here.
No.
And number Olsen?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dabroski?
No.
Sarah Paul?
Yes.
Motion passed.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, enjoyed talking to you.
Thank you. I'm going to look up, thank you, the architect and the little red book.
This sounds really interesting.
That's fascinating.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Enjoyed.
Thank you.
I know you finished.
It's been a while. I personally have two copies of my own. I thought I left this, that book here.
Yeah, you've made that mention before.
But I, but I went off to the preservation library over in the corner, and it's not there. So, I don't know that anybody has asked to check out books.
Shown place.
All right, wait, are we supposed to be finding the facts?
That was my next question.
Finding the facts would, well.
Both, both applications that we've acted on.
Who do you want to do first?
Let's do the first application first.
You start with some circle?
Yeah.
The proposed application has no minimal or no impact to the resource, is removable, and is consistent with the design guidelines.
On section five.
Anything else?
That's good.
Andy, you have there.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Finding the facts on the second one is section five A.
Five A?
Yeah, follow Scott likes.
And all windows will leave, replaced with the same size.
Gregor Scott.
Same style and same pattern.
Oh, well, okay.
And he's based for dissenting?
You must see him somewhere else, because he's not, he's not doing, he's not a hematologist anymore.
The one that works for the building.
Okay.
The one that works for wood. Oh, that's great. That's great. Yeah, yeah, there I understand that.
Okay, the sign man.
The motion.
Okay.
I did put a blue sheet for this, for this picture in place. Is that usually tangible?
This is a commercial building.
That's what I was wondering.
There's an architect's drawing in there.
It's a, it's a historical documentation that's on our website on the properties, and I didn't find one for this.
I don't know if they ever did one for commercial districts when they were doing that.
Okay.
Because this was built after those.
Are we on?
No, this was, this was built before nineteen seventy-six, right?
The middle part.
Yeah. There would, if there was a blue sheet, if they did commercial buildings, it would have been, it would have been picked up. I'll look for it, I don't know why it's not there.
Thank you.
Well, built there, the builder didn't work.
Yeah. Are you asking if there's a blue sheet for this property?
Yeah.
There was one when we did Darling Estates.
Isn't that the next building over?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That's the next building over.
Oh, okay, they might be connected, but there's.
No, I don't think they're connected at all.
It might be a different address?
Okay, mine is six.
I, I don't think it's in this building at all. I think it's the next building over that has a gray in the center.
I'll, I'll email you.
I know where, I know where to look on the shipper website.
Okay.
That's, that's where I, if I don't find it.
Sure. Okay, tell us about your sign.
Okay, I want to just update my site. So, the, and thank you, Steve, for getting me on the, on the document. What you just helped out. Yeah, that's the design of what I would like to put up. And it consists of two signs, excuse me, the Red Barn Properties Licensed Real Estate Brokers, and the sign below it, which is a designer, Lindsay Lane is a world design company that is in there with you. So, that's basically it. And I want to remove the frame, that old frame that's outdated. And I want to put tongue and groove shiplap, eight-inch vertical sign.
That's what this is?
That's what that is.
Okay.
The ceiling, we started half set.
And this is where the signs are going to be?
Exactly.
Okay.
So, what about this by appointment only? Is that?
He's removing that.
Well, I was going to.
What's to rebuild it, so?
Yeah, it's going to, that's going to fall away.
But are you going to rebuild this frame? And these signs are going to go in a new frame?
Not without the frame.
No frame.
Floating frame.
Floating shiplap.
Yeah, with shiplap.
Tongue and groove, shiplap.
Best to be moved.
Just being moved.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yep.
But this will be there, the by appointment will be there?
I have to get out my encyclopedia of the subject.
We don't want people walking in, wondering what that is.
Coming to you and asking you what Lindsay Lane is.
Exactly, coming in, right. I mean, we get people walking in all the time.
What you have is you have Licensed Real Estate Brokers. Is there anything she wants to add here, underneath it, to say?
No, just, just by appointment only.
She doesn't want to add it to this sign right here, right underneath it, but?
Yeah, I mean, that's possible. Yeah, that's, that's entirely Google.
Okay.
It could be in a, in a.
Are you both by appointment only?
No.
Yeah, I see what you guys are getting at. Because if, if it's a separate sign, then it might apply to both signs. Whereas if it's part of Lindsay's sign, then it's.
But I also don't want to change her sign if that's not what she wants, because the sign is also like your brand and your logo. So, what I was actually suggesting is, people are walking into Red Barn Properties asking you what Lindsay, Lindsay Lane is. So, does she want to put anything on her sign that describes what she is in a few short words, like you guys have Licensed Real Estate?
Well, we have that on there. Licensed Real Estate Brokers, that's a state requirement. She's a designer and, interior designer.
Yeah, so that's on, right there, boom, interior design, then they would be coming in.
Well, they might, they might.
Yeah.
People walk in all the time.
That's good. Very good.
I mean, it's good to be busy, but they will just walk in and, people will walk in and ask, what is this?
Yeah.
So.
Right, so that's what, that's, I'm only saying this to help you guys out. It's nothing that, I would say, we got to get rid of this. But it, it, it's just a way for you to say, okay, here's what this is, because no one knows what Lindsay Lane is. But most signs in the village, you'll notice, unless it says exactly what they are in the name.
That would certainly.
It would say right underneath what that, what they do. It could just say, this is interior designer.
Or something like that, yeah.
Something like that.
I'm okay to approve it as it is, honestly, but just giving you the opportunity to pull up and say, hey, do we want to modify this?
Yeah.
Of what else?
I'm saying, what you presented, I find no problem. Saying, do you want to pull up and modify it?
Right. So, one is one way, one door, one goes to the other door?
No, we use the same door.
Same door, oh, okay. All right, so it's, okay.
What's the material here right now, Andy?
Uh.
In this space? Is it, is it plywood?
Plywood, I think it's just plywood.
Yeah, it's just plywood, we like doors from around it.
Oh, yeah.
Quite exotic.
Well, I, I.
Shiplap is very exotic these days.
Well, there's a lot of stuff, there's a lot of stuff going on, on the elevation. So, this is one type of siding and second type of siding, and this is the same as over here, but then we're introducing a third.
I think Andy's going to argue with you that the shiplap already exists on the ceiling.
This?
Well, that's the ceiling. You don't see the ceiling. So, I'm, I guess I would, I don't know what, I, I'm not going to.
But this looks like an entrance porch.
I'm not saying that I.
Totally appropriate.
That I would have a huge objection to it, but I can't, this little bit, while it's kind of illustrated there.
It's reset, it's better than two, Jenny, so it's.
I, I, I get that. I get that. But we've, we already have two different siding types on the building.
You're worried he's going to look like the siding store? You're worried he's going to look like the siding store?
No, I just think it's not appropriate. You know, this, this is very.
How do you feel about making?
Folk Gothic, you know, and this is, this is far more standard, you know, ordinary siding, in fact.
Well, it's, from the street, it'll just look white, like it does not melt off the front, because they won't be able to detect the shiplap, the tongue and groove from.
I think it might show.
Pedestrian.
Yeah, until you get up to the door, you won't even notice.
I'm not, I'm actually not convinced this board and baton is original because it's so. Like, oh, there's, there's no blue sheet.
This looks exactly like the board and baton on my house.
The middle of the door, yes.
Yeah, the middle, the middle.
The bams keep the wind from, yeah, basically.
So, you're suggesting is a vertical board and baton background, and that sign's a floor? Ship straight, yeah, shiplap, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Then, it's a background for the sign.
Right, which will float.
Which we don't have. No, it won't float, it'll be, it'll, it's, it's a, what do you call it?
It's not in the frame.
Right, correct, yeah. Yeah, it'll be centered in the, in the entryway.
The blue sheet for this property is, is available on the website, because I just pulled it up on my phone.
Do you ever get any confusion for like being a, a yellow building and not red?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, I was wrong.
It skips that address, for sure.
Yeah, it does, it does. In fact, where I pulled up was Sixth South Street.
Well, it's a, it's not the building, it's a different.
Pardon?
It's a different building in, in your.
Well, no, I, the streets are listed separately, and I pulled up South Street, not Shane, because Shane comes before South. And screen, yes, bad fingers struck again.
Do you want us to approve this, or did you want to talk about it later?
I think you have a sketch from the sign designer, the dimensions.
These, we have two from the sign, sign designer, Andy?
Yeah, and so.
This one or this?
It's the same, yeah, they're all the same, yeah, just scaled it down.
But, just, yeah, the dimensions are on this one. And there's a photo of kind of what it would look like.
That's a similar HDU product that they made.
So, let me.
They're really good.
The illustration here implies that it's this configuration.
Right. And that illustration, Jenny, was just to, to make it to scale as much as possible.
Yeah, got it.
So, so to go back, you, you see no issue with just the name and by appointment only?
Do you want us to approve it the sign exactly as it is right here? Or do you want to go back?
Well, I like the idea about, about adding a description of, of this, so.
I mean, I think it's.
I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. And it's, I think that's going to ultimately help you with what I've heard here.
Yeah.
Well, but if that's, if that's her logo, she maybe doesn't want to mess it up.
Right, that's it, of course.
Yeah, so if.
Exactly.
Look easily be a sign that says interior designer by appointment only.
Yes, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I was getting at.
Maybe, maybe she won't, I mean, maybe she'll back off on the by appointment only, if it says designer, I don't know, but we just sell.
You guys can, you guys can duke it out as far as I'm concerned.
But I think it makes a lot of sense in terms of graphic.
Yeah, I agree, thank you for that suggestion.
Pardon me?
We do an alternative.
Well, if she objects, then, then she can pay the seven-five bucks and come in.
Well, we can approve it as it is, or conditionally approve it, assuming that the signage is consistent with the same lettering, style, size.
Well, if it's going to be the same size, if it's.
Consistent.
Is there any restriction on how close the two distinct signs can be?
I don't know the answer.
Depends on which one it is.
That would be a, that would be a steep question.
Yeah. How close they can be to each other?
No, there's no.
Yeah, no, the measurements are more of like a percent that I can open it.
But on, on directory signs, and this, this is not, this is not a directory, but directory signs here have specific language about things like that, do they not?
Yeah.
But this is not a directory sign, this is a different sign.
Okay, so we'll just put them in there so that it looks, we want them to look distinct, but in matching.
Well, my only point is, if she appreciates your saying, maybe if you put interior design, they wouldn't knock on our door, they want to see you. And by appointment, if, if interior design was by appointment instead of on her sign, this sign would either have to be bigger, or the letter would become smaller.
See, we just don't want to convey that we're, that it's a retail.
Right.
Store.
Yes.
Open with people, the window shopping malls slash.
Yeah.
Whichever.
Candlelight night's coming up, too.
Yeah, because it's, it's, she's not there now, she's out of the world, so.
So, we can, we can go ahead with what you proposed.
Okay.
And then, let her know the options.
If there's an issue, then she can come back.
Yeah.
I'll make a.
So, is that where we're at, we're at a approval as is and not a conditional approval?
I was just going to make a motion to approve the application as presented.
Without any contingent?
And then if she wants to change?
Well, yeah, if she wants to change, that's a different deal.
Or we submit another design.
Steve has a.
But can I get going on my sign? Because I.
Steve?
Steve has something to say.
Those signs have to be bound together.
Why?
In this application?
Those signs have to be bound together. They have to act as one sign, whether they're chained, like put a chain between them or something, but technically, by the sign code.
Oh, I get it.
Where you are not allowed.
These two.
It is not a, it is not a commercial multi-building. It's, it's a single entrance building, and they can only have one sign technically.
Oh.
So, so all three of these need to be bound together?
Blue chain, even if you just change them together, they still need one sign, but they have to be as, as if you're hanging it, it goes up as one piece.
That's an.
Have we litigated the bound definition?
No, but I'm just saying, they have to be, you know, technically by the sign code, it has to be one sign that would be hung as one unit.
Okay. How's that sound to you?
Well, that sounds like.
What does that, what does that mean in terms of the modification of a portion of that sign if Lindsay decided she did want to make a change?
Doesn't matter, I mean, as long as it's still, like you said, if you're taking one piece and hanging this one piece, I don't care whether you've got this a little bigger or smaller, but you're hanging one piece as one unit. If you're hanging this one and hanging this one, it's two separate signs, it goes against the code.
But we would still have to approve a new sign that includes the entirety of all the material.
That's however you want to, you know, how you approve it. That's, however you want to, you know, how your approval is.
What I'm hearing you say is that this proposal as presented is not to cook, it's three separate signs.
We talked about this before, and I, I mentioned that the signs have to be hung together, that somehow they have to be chained or something, so it, it hangs as one unit. Signs can be many things, you know, I mean, you could have multiple pieces, as long as it goes up as one unit. If you're hanging, I tactical, like I said, if you read the code, it only allows a single sign facing a roadway on a wall face of, of a building. And if it's a directory sign, they're only allowed one foot by one foot for the name of each unit next to the doors, you know what I mean, of, of the building.
Which one tops?
Tell me the sign again.
So if this were chained together, that would be separate, okay?
I think it would be legal.
But it's one entrance, though.
And they don't have to be, they're not allowed, you know, they don't have to do giant change, but it, it technically, it has to be hung as one.
If he's wanting to hang them on a wall.
Is that a decision you want to make off the cuff tonight, or is that something?
Fishing wire, like fishing wire?
Steve, is it per business, is it per building, or is it per entry to the building?
Per, per, per base, or linear base of the building facing a roadway, if you had two walls, you could have two signs facing two different roadways. But on a single building, single entrance, which you, they're only single.
That's the issue, the single entrance.
Now, you could have a directory, a small directory sign next to the door, but that won't help you, because the doors are like this.
Yeah.
You're talking about a base wall like this, and everybody else in there is only allowed a, a single sign per business.
Steve? Yeah, right, why isn't this a remarkable commercial building? There's two, there's two businesses.
And you could have a directory sign, but you can't have a sign.
It says, when an entrance serves more than one commercial establishment, one sign for the commercial establishment. Okay, and on the same elevation, elevation as the entrance, it says commercial establishment.
Yeah.
That's 168.7B2, I mean, I don't want to argue with your interpretation, because your interpretation is, is, is the law, but it seems to me that 168.7B talks about the multiple commercial building, which this is, because this is the businesses.
So they can each have a sign, but she can't have the two that are here, she's got two.
Well, Steve, what, what's the maximum size of a sign I could have?
A sign, a sign based on linear.
I got sixty feet.
Oh, yeah, you could, you could technically have a sixty foot square foot sign, if that's sixty foot across the front.
I think that would be argued, but.
Yeah.
We wouldn't do it, I'm just saying, but the code is very clear, I'm, I'm based on the linear footage of the front of whatever surface you're putting on, you're allowed that square foot.
So going back to this, Steve, if you put a chain between these two, you've got it, if these two here are together.
When you're just reading it, I would say, as long as there's only two, one per each business, it's fine.
With a chain?
No, don't need the chain.
You don't even need the chain.
He's interpreting saying, this is a multi-business building.
But then, Steve, let me ask the question, Lindsay Lane in by appointment only is illustrated here are two signs.
Correct.
Do they have to be chained together to be one sign?
Yeah, they have to be bound together.
Or, or printed together.
Yeah, or.
Yeah, printed together.
Or printed together.
Danded together, whatever, somehow, they have to be.
They could be one sign with, with a, with a line crossed.
Right.
Like two signs.
Yeah.
See what Andy's.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I could do that.
I mean, the chains, this. No, I think you need to change.
No, you don't need to change.
Not between yours and hers.
Yeah.
She wants two different things, she's gonna have to hook them together, because you each get one sign.
Because I, I mean, I thought, well, I could keep, I could keep the, the window frame up, because that sort of denotes one sign within that, but I don't really want to do that. I, I just love it. You, you, you guys can have two signs, one each, so if she wants a by appointment only on hers, the, those signs could be together, you could have a sign that shaped like that. And then you put divider line in the side if she wanted it.
Okay.
And actually, if the sign, if you didn't put the divider line, it's clear that by appointment applies to her.
To her, right.
It's included within her.
Space.
Yeah. So if you just, if you didn't put a line in there, you just shaped it.
Got you.
Right. Put by appointment only on there.
Okay.
Kasper, are you okay with the material, is that your thing, that high density, your thing?
Standard size.
Yeah.
They don't use wood anymore, they said, I tried to get, because the old sign is wood, wood.
Yeah.
They don't, they just won't do it.
So is this gonna be different, do you think this is gonna be different enough, do you need to, you feel comfortable having this evaluated? Or do you want to come back with what she and you decide to do?
No, it'll be along the lines of what you guys described, okay, and I can get the sign guy to mock up easily.
Okay. All right.
So, procedural question, can I, could we, so as it's presented, it doesn't meet the guidelines, because there's actually three separate signs, right? So we're saying, if she were to just merge these two things together, and make it one sign with a line down the middle.
Right.
With Lindsay on top and by appointment, then, then that would be fine, and we, can we approve that?
Yeah.
Even though this, I mean, can we just say, we approve it with this modification, these two signs have to be.
And then when I exceed the square.
The condition of the application, so of the approved, yeah, yeah, that she combined those two signs into one.
Okay.
Yeah, what did I apply for, the fifty-nine square feet?
Yeah, so you know, you won't exceed the square foot in the wall.
Oh, I see, okay.
So just to get on the same page, we're okay with the replacement of the existing board for the shiplap? And then it's going to be two, two signs?
Two signs.
But as presented?
One will be as presented, the other will be modified as we discussed.
Chris, you want to take a shot at that?
I'm just trying to wrap it all up in my head, we've discussed a lot of couple different things. And then, are we approving her sign, or are we punting that?
You approve, I mean, what I've heard is we are approving the application as presented with, with the modification that the two lower signs, whatever her name is.
Lindsay Lane.
Lindsay Lane.
Lindsay Lane, apply by appointment only, will become one sign, only for the condition that it will not exceed fifty-nine square feet, the two signs together will not exceed fifty-nine square feet.
What about if she decides to change the information on the sign?
But she got to come back.
Okay.
So if she wants to add.
Designer.
Whatever.
Yeah, she. Then, we got to come back for that.
Without the requirement of you needing to come back for her sign.
Okay.
See, I think that if I were you, this issue of the line between the two signs is gonna, I think, pique her interest in that, so you want to make sure your guys are clear on that. Because this, this, this sign here, she wants that black field to really have that stand out, but if you got a line under it, I don't see any difference with that, but you really.
I mean, that explains the same piece of wood, still having order on a single.
Well, and, right, because if you can, this by appointment only, it's a smaller text, right, if that was incorporated in this sign.
Yeah.
Well, if you look at this one, I mean, basically, all you would have to do is make these two.
Just make that, right, exactly.
Yeah, but drawing them, drawing them together, get rid of the lines, it makes it very evident that Lindsay Lane is by appointment only, your sign is completely separate.
My sign, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
No, no appointments needed.
Lindsay Lane is your agent.
No appointments needed.
That's just called, they're not even gonna know they're at the right place, because it's yellow.
Did you write this, something, did you have some of that down? Can, can we read, can you read that back to us again?
Can't change the color.
Yeah, so approving two signs, one as presented, one with modification, seeing that the lower signs need one sign, both not exceeding fifty-nine square feet, as well as the existing board that occurred for shiplap.
The lower, the lower sign, Lindsay Lane, insert that in.
Uh, the name of the.
Red Farm Properties is approved as is, and Lindsay Lane needs to be modified to be, the two signs need to go into one.
At least give most of them today.
Yeah, I'll do that in a minute, and I'll see you.
And I can have Connor's his name, he can, he can redo this, like in thirty seconds, at his computer, if you, you know, I could send that.
Yeah, just make it one, that's okay.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but we're approving what we see tonight, we're not gonna, we're not gonna base that on something, we might be able to see it now, so.
We comfortable with it?
We ought to make the motion fit what we're.
Okay. We comfortable with a motion with that? As written, or as spoken here?
Somebody, somebody wants us to say. Motion. Motion to.
Somebody has to say so moved.
So moved.
I did not make the motion, though, correct?
No, you didn't make it.
I did.
So moved, okay, thank you. Is there?
Second.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Dubrasky?
Aye.
Chair, Chair Pollock?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Man Kumal?
Okay, thank you.
Good to see you, Andy.
Yeah.
So, hi there, Jane, have a great, um.
Sorry for any of that, you too.
She's happily retired.
She's happily retired.
Happily. Oh, happily, oh, I knew that, oh, yeah.
She's offended by the notion that you could be half retired.
Yeah, the real estate world, probably. Sure. Don't mistake, she ever did. Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You took it.
We have minutes for the last two meetings to approve.
I have a correction to December eighteenth, September eighteenth meeting, page three, just above minutes, or suggest Jennifer Ahrens. Ahrens is spelled A-H-R-E-N-S, and she is an architectural consultant, she's been a consultant to the village.
Any other comments on this set of minutes? I was not there for that one, so I will not vote on this, but.
No, I don't.
September, this is September.
September eighteen.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, yes, wait, 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 wait.
Yeah, it's, you can change it.
Okay, sir.
Wait, was.
Approve the minutes with the.
No, no.
No, no, I was in Europe in September.
What, are you asking me to have another correction, or the one for Jennifer Ahrens?
Jennifer Ahrens, no, no, Jennifer Ahrens is A-H-R-E-N-S, is an architectural consultant.
Yes, I got that.
Okay.
You want to add the approvals of the next meeting, or approve them now with the?
We approve them.
Approve them with the correction.
Yeah.
And I'll second that.
Uh, member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Dubrasky?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, and then we have the other set.
And I'll just make one edit to the second page, under denial findings, if you could add, instead of. Now, findings are a little too, like suggestive to a personal decision, so you can keep everything that it is, but also add believes that this does not qualify as compatible or appropriate to the guidelines as reviewed.
Um, Dennis, what was it, qualify or what?
Uh, compatible or appropriate.
Thank you. Will do.
Thank you. And then if, if, if I can, after making the edit, I'll make a motion to approve these minutes.
Seconding.
Uh, member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Chair Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, finally, we have the cell, cell tower.
Replacement, it's a replacement in kind, that's why the board didn't get it.
Right, but just information.
Good.
Where is it?
It's on the.
They, um, on the tower, they replaced, they, they just upgraded some of the antennas up, and it's literally in kind. You know what I mean, they changed a couple of boxes on the wall, you can't see it, they're a little larger, but the antennas themselves, same projection, same height, everything. I have one thing, though, um, you know, our evaluator list, Steve Jordan, no, does not, he, he's not hard anymore, is there any way we could find somebody overseas like Blake also?
Let me just say that I, I told you, Stephen, whoever was the secretary for our board quite a while ago, that Steve was not interested, and his name was not on the most recent list.
Right.
Of, of window evaluators.
There is a list here.
Yes, there is.
More than. But I think he's, I think he's quite, is he?
I'm sorry, I got it, I got it.
Not feeling that, yeah.
He's.
Doesn't matter.
He's an old dude who doesn't want to do it anymore. This, this one, this was one issued, I got it.
Yeah.
From Jeff.
Yeah.
And Steve's name is not on this list.
First page in her binder.
Very important.
Well, this is a square foot.
Yeah, she's got binders.
You might want to bring the big copies, yeah, go for it.
Yeah, go ahead.
With that, motion, motion to conclude the meeting?
I gave everyone the new meeting dates, if we can prove enough, or we don't have to approve, but if you can just take a look at them by the next meeting, I want to be able to post them on the website soon.
Yeah, good.
But I know, I don't think we need a terrible for them.
No, just if you wanted to modify of the dates.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to conclude?
A motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yep.
Also.
I should put on my.
Uh, member Carter?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Dubrasky?
Yes.
Chair Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Thanks, Eric.